Welcome to the our weekly updates council of the whole meeting. We are joined by Counselor Letterman, Counselor Walsh, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Ramos, Counselor Fenton, Counselor Whitfield, Counselor Davila. We also look like we're joined by Tom Ash, Commissioner Harris, Solicitor Pacula, and Superintendent Danny Warwick. So, thank you so much for joining us. We will get started so as to be cognizant of everybody's time. Commissioner, we will start with you and your updates.
Certainly, thank you very much. I hope everyone is well and staying safe. So, this is an update for June 9th for the city of Springfield. I will quickly go through the data. The data is 104,156 for the state. Hampton County, 6,395, which is 61, 6.14% of the state. The city of Springfield currently is 2,504, which is 2.40% of the state and 39.15% of the county. The deaths at this point are 7,454 for the state. Hampton County, 629. The city of Springfield, 629 is 8.43% of the state. The city of Springfield... We okay? Okay, the city of Springfield is 112, which is 17.80% of the county. Last one I reported to you, the city of Springfield was 102. The white deaths went up two. The Hispanic deaths went up five. The black deaths went up two. The Asian deaths went up one, which is 112. So, of that 112, the 55 of the white population is 49.10% of the 112. The 32 is 28.57% for the Hispanic population. Black, 23, 20.53%. And the two Asian, 1.78% of that total. Right now, 54 of those deaths are in the long-term care facilities. That's 48.21%, 58 are residential, which is 51.78%. Overall, the city has been doing well in our cases. On Sunday, we had four, Monday, five, Tuesday, 10. And yesterday, we had 10 as well. I know that you have probably seen the paper where we have shuttered the tent. And we had our last guest there yesterday. The de-cleaning is happening right now, and so we are moving through that at this point. We are prepared and ready to stand up the tents if we need to again. Staff is still in place. The structure is in place. We have an MOU with STCC until July 30th. If we need to extend it for any reason, the mayor will have that conversation with the president and the board of trustees. But right now, at this point, the tent is not operational. So, that is my report. Let me just simply say that Counselor Whitfield asked me about testing. She wanted to know about some data as far as testing was concerned in the city of Springfield. I've asked the state for that data. I don't have it, Counselor Whitfield, but I've asked them for it because they do keep some demographic data. It's my understanding that it's not concrete in many cases. And so, I have checked on that for you. Phase one, many of you know about the barber shops and hairdressers are opening for the first time. We have not received many complaints about how people are behaving as far as their barber shops and hairdressers are concerned. During phase two, we will continue to work through the department to make sure that what we can control is being adhered to as far as the guidance is concerned from the governor. Testing is still being done mainly for symptomatic individuals. We have not gotten to the place where we are testing broadly for asymptomatic individuals. And so, that's very important to say. We still believe that testing is and vaccine are really critical to our opening up the city again fully and the nation, actually. So, we continue to ask folks to adhere to the non-pharmaceutical interventions, and you all know them well. Do not shake hands, hug, wear face covering, stay home if you're sick, hand hygiene, and social distancing. And the last thing I'll say is contact tracing continues to be very important to our response. And so, we're working very hard to make sure we're in touch with all of those people who have had close contact with someone who is positive. So, thank you very much, counselors.
So, thank you, Commissioner and Counselor Whitfield. I know you have your hands up, but before we take any questions, Tom and/or Solicitor, I know as of Monday was we entered phase two. If you could just give a quick highlight as to what that entailed and also how that looks differently potentially in Springfield or what are some of the things that we should be cognizant of? I know you guys have done some work around outdoor dining. If you could just give us a brief overview, and then we'll open it up for questions for you all, and then we'll get right to Superintendent Warwick, who will take up the rest of our meeting.
Sure. As you know, the governor announced last Saturday that on Monday, he would be allowing the restaurants to open. We had the week before some guidance, but we had the final guidance on that Saturday where we had put out an application for the reopening that is limited to outdoor venues, that there are some very specific rules to comply with workplace safety standards and safe standards for patrons with regard to the capacity that may be available on a patio type of situation. The ABBCC has put out guidance. We have gathered all of that together in our application process, which I would describe to you as a hybrid between sort of what we do for one-day permits and for what we do for change of description of premises permits. The difference is that they've been melded together and an overlap of the COVID requirements has been added. While we have experience of dining outside for some places, no one has experience of dealing with the outside dining with the COVID requirements. So, we're adjusting and trying to help people comply with those requirements. We're accepting applications. We've accepted applications where we're dealing with it on the fly, if you will, and to try to help and encourage people to get open ASAP. We have not designated any streets for closing. We're leaving that to applicants to say, hey, I would like some plans for closing. And we have a process for that. And so, that has been implemented with regard to Fort Street. I think that's the only one at this time where we've had an application for that. But I think we have received a number of permits that we've been in the middle of processing, and many places have opened already. And we continue to move forward. We're trying to, as I said, field questions from a lot of applicants and provide guidance to say what portions of their applications may be missing. And we're trying to adjust because it's all new to everyone. So far, I think it's been fairly smooth, but I think we're all looking to the point where we can all go indoor for a meal as well. As you know, the bars have been pushed back to phase four, so that's still a ways out. But we're hopeful that the governor will allow some indoor dining at restaurants before that.
Thank you, Solicitor. Tom, did you want to add anything from the administration's standpoint?
The only, Counsel President, that we were enthusiastic about getting, we were mindful that although many of us have been fortunate to be working for the last 90 days, many weren't, particularly in this industry. So, we were, the mayor was very, very concerned, wanted to get this industry back open. In fact, he paid a visit to a couple of establishments over this week in the downtown area and was very pleased with the outcome. As Solicitor said, we still got some work to do, but you know, we're hopeful that it's going to be as smooth as it started out to be.
Thank you. I see we have a number of hands in the queue. I just want counselors to be mindful that we also want to leave a sufficient amount of time to hear from our superintendent, Daniel Warwick. So, just be mindful as we move forward. Counselor Whitfield, followed by Counselor Walsh and Counselor Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner, I just wanted to commend you and say thank you for all the work that you're doing. A couple of your staff was at the C3 meeting on Tuesday, and they told us exactly what went into contact tracing. And it's a lot of work, and I know your staff have taken over responsibilities that they haven't had in the past. So, I just wanted to thank you for the hard work that you all are doing. And then I just wanted to ask if you knew what the cost is for one COVID-19 test is?
I do not. We have not, to my knowledge, the first responders and the other individuals that we have sent to the city have not paid. And I think that COVID-19 right now is covered by a third party. That would be Mass Health and/or private insurance. But I'm not sure what that number is, Counsel, but I'm happy to check for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield and Counselor Walsh, followed by Counselor Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Attorney Pacula, for that. You know, I think we're all anxious to see restaurants reopen because we don't want to see them close, and we know how difficult this has been for them. I have been following the situation with Nadine's. Were they able to open or were they kind of caught in some sort of red tape castle?
No, he had made a mistake. He had not submitted an application, and he actually had apologized for...
Oh, good.
...the confusion. But he's open, and all is well.
Okay. So, there are no, there is outdoor dining, but there are no restroom facilities, correct?
No, they're available.
They're available.
Are. People, can they go into the restaurant?
Yes, like one at a time.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, that's good to know.
You can't go to the bar.
Okay. Thanks for clearing that up.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh, Counselor Ramos, followed by Counselor Davila.
Mr. President, thank you. My question is for Commissioner Hudson. I was wondering, just wanted to follow up on our discussion regarding masks for senior citizens. Was wondering if we've made any progress on that?
Yeah, and I apologize because I should have put that in my comments. So, the Department of Elder Affairs, as I said to you in the email, has made 1,500 cloth masks that they have distributed to the individuals who frequented all of the senior centers throughout the city of Springfield. The other thing that we are going to do, I have asked for 5,000 additional masks so that we can figure out a distribution point. I'm not sure that we can do them door-to-door, Counsel, but I certainly think that we can make them available at a pickup point once that is, once we do not, and we'll make them particularly for the, and specifically for our elder population. So, thank you for the recommendation. Thank you for following up with me. And we have, as I said, we have given out 1,500. We have 200 more cloth masks that we wanted to say for people who could potentially come to the senior center. But again, thank you for following up with me. And I would say you know when those 5,000 masks are available.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos, Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, everybody. Just want to quick, two quick questions for Attorney Pacula. I'm glad to see that we're moving forward with the outdoor dining. And for that process, is there any fee involving the application process?
No, there's no application fee. Clearly, if someone says, hey, I want to open, I want to build a patio, well, then they'd have to go through the normal building permit process. Or similarly, if someone says, I want to put a tent up, there is a tent permit that is separate and apart. I do know that there's also a street closing fee, but DPW, my understanding is, has been making some adjustments to what the normal fee is, given the circumstances.
And in terms of the response, are we giving the response that we thought we would get from the city? I know here in Forest Park, I'm a little surprised that nobody has opened up, and as far as I know, nobody has applied, which I'm a little surprised.
I didn't catch the last part. You were surprised nobody was open.
In Forest Park, as far as, my understanding is, nobody has applied as of yet for the outdoor permitting. So, I just want to kind of wonder compared to the rest of the city.
Some of the feedback we're getting, we have heard from some places that have existing patios, and we would expect them to potentially open up, but they have determined it's really not worth it to do so, and they've elected to wait. And I think there's a lot of wait-and-see going on. And I think that, you know, one of the things that people might be looking to is whether the demand is there. And there may be, and you know, I think those who have been getting calls from their customers or potential customers have probably, you know, been at the forefront of implementing this. Others, you know, particularly places that may have some chain in other states or some experience or have done some other marketing, you know, that it appears that many places have elected not to at this time. They may, and to be, quite frankly, we're a little surprised that we didn't get more of a response, but now that I see what's going on, it's probably right where it should be.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. We also are joined by Counselor Allen. Counselor Allen, I know you're on your phone, so if you do wish to speak, then you kind of, you can either text me or you'll just have to jump in. I see no other hands raised in the queue, so thank you to those in the Situation Room, and we'll turn everything over at this time to Superintendent, Counselor Walsh.
Before we get into hearing from the superintendent, I did have one question. I wasn't sure if I should address it to Eddie or to Tom Ash, but you know, I think all of us are hearing a lot of complaints about fireworks. There seem to be a lot more of them going around. There's certainly a lot in the Forest Park area. People want to know what can be done and is there going to be any kind of a response to it? I don't know how you find out who's doing them or how difficult that is. But Eddie, you've probably heard them. They're all over the park.
I think Tom's going to respond, but let me just say, last night, I had a long night, and then I got up very early this morning, and knock on wood, it was reduced compared to how it had been some of the nights before. So, but I hear you, and some of the past nights.
Well, unfortunately, a lot of people don't realize there are fireworks, and they're afraid they're the start or something else.
We discovered it, Counselor Walsh, one person came up, and one person said, I'm hearing an awful lot of fireworks in my neighborhood. And as we worked our way around the room, it turned out everybody has been hearing. So, it's in every part of the city. And so, the commissioner has responded by putting a squad together that can dress and chest the fireworks, and hopefully, as Solicitor Pacula said, the reduction is based on some of that kind of going out and figuring out where it is and targeting areas, and hopefully, you know, the idea of reducing, because it's, it did get out of hand. It's late, late at night, and it's not your typical fire. It's very loud and those things. So, I think and I hope that that squad is having effect.
Yeah. So, is there like a number of people call if they're concerned?
Very much so. Many, many calls to our office, Counsel Walsh.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh, Counselor Whitfield. I see you have your hand raised.
Yes, it'll be brief. Yeah, the fireworks have reduced a lot since the press release went out in my neighborhood, so I'm glad, glad of that. But Commissioner, I just wanted to remind you that I do want to give a donation toward the masks. I've been trying to order masks myself, but I think I'm going to China, so I'm not getting them, so I don't want to order any for you guys, but I would like to contribute to helping Human Services to purchase masks. So, whenever you figure out how we can do that, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. I'm very appreciative of your reaching out and wanting to put some of your resources towards serving seniors in Springfield. So, thank you for the offer. At this point, I'm not sure that we're going to need to do that based on the fact that I'm going to try to use CARES money to purchase if I can, but I appreciate your reaching out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, and I just want to remind counselors that we do want to take advantage of Superintendent Warwick, being that we have him here now, and we normally don't or aren't able to take advantage of his presence. Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be very brief. But Tom, just to follow up on the fireworks issue, I agree, I agree, now I have an orchestra out of my window, like 2:00 in the morning. So, I know the commissioner is putting together a detail. I'm just wondering if you could, one, tell me or take a stab as to what's causing this, and two, what will the police department do? What are the fines and what actions are they going to take?
I would venture to say, Counsel, to know that these, the fireworks, the increase, the obvious increase is a result of the unease on a national level. I don't think it's unique to Springfield. And so, the second part of your question was...
What kind of actions are they going to take? Is fines imposed? I'm sure they're going to confiscate the fireworks, so forth and so on.
Yeah, there is an ordinance. I think Counselor Gomez shared that on his social media, and we have as well, that speaks to that, what the options are, at least when they come upon situations like this. So, there is an ordinance on the book, and my sense that they're following it.
Thank you, Tom.
Tom, can you send us, can you send everybody on the council the ordinance so that they are aware, please? And also, Commissioner, can you send us an email with the updated numbers that you provided for us at the beginning of the meeting when you get the opportunity, please?
Happy to do that. As well, I think that Bill Baker puts my numbers up every day.
Okay.
Well, I think, but let me check in with him. If not, I'll make sure you get them.
Thank you so much. All right, since there are no other questions in the queue, we will turn it over to Superintendent Warwick. Superintendent Warwick, it's a pleasure to have you before the council today. Please don't be a stranger. I know there are going to be a lot of developments that occur over the summer, and so before school starts, we would love to hear from you again. But please, the floor is yours. Why don't you start off by giving us an overview as to what is happening? What are the plans for the summer? And if you know as of yet, what are some of the plans for reopening of school in the fall, if that is in the plans?
You, everyone, and thanks for inviting me to participate today. Right now, Springfield's been engaged with the rest of the school systems in the Commonwealth in a situation with remote learning. School closed on, for us, on March 12th, and we went to a remote situation. We were very, very fortunate. The school committee was very supportive when we actually made it a priority in our budget some five years ago to go one-to-one with our laptops. So, unlike a lot of communities, especially urban centers, we were able to distribute laptops to all our families, any student who needed or wanted one to use at home. So, we distributed actually 17,000 laptops between the students who were on take-home and students who weren't on a take-home situation already, who wanted a laptop. We were able to either have them come to the school and pick it up, but if they couldn't, we used one of our transportation companies to deliver them, and we actually delivered them to the houses. The other piece was the connectivity piece, and we provided every family that asked us for help, help with a connectivity situation, even to the point where we actually funded hotspots for a lot of families. So, again, trying to provide access for every student. Our teachers have been reaching out, working with the students regularly and remotely. And given the training that we provided in the PD for the last five years, our teachers were more adept at using technology for instruction than, again, most others in the Commonwealth. So, we're all doing our best with that. I think it's a challenge. It's working in a different way, but I think we had a leg up on it. And I think, I looked at our participation rates, we're finalized, lies and look at them, but I think they're significantly higher than most of the other rates in the Commonwealth. We set up a situation where with every family that's participating, we're following through regularly. Any family that wasn't participating, there was multiple reach-outs from the school, teacher, counselor, administrators, to provide assistance to help them reach out. Any family had a technology issue, our technology department was replacing laptops or working with the families on those issues. So, I feel that's going very well. I looked at our participation rates, and they look significantly higher than, again, I saw in other places in the Commonwealth. So, I think the investment in technology that we made some years back really paid dividends with this, but it's still a challenging situation for families to, you know, parents are working remotely sometimes or having to go off to work, and students are trying to do the work from home. So, we've been as supportive as we can to all of our families. Our counselors have also been reaching out to families, because a lot of our families have experienced some trauma, and this is a very difficult situation. So, our counselors, our City Connects workers have been reaching out, trying to provide all the mental health supports that we provide in school. On the meal front, we've provided over a million meals from 18 different distribution points in every neighborhood in the city, and we're going to continue with those sites all summer and probably into the fall as needed. But that's gone very well. You know, Pat Roach, my team, did a great job working with SEDEXO, and we've not only provided the meals, but tried also to improve the quality of the meals, and we've actually distributed produce through some grants. So, I think the meal piece has gone very well. For the summer, we're planning on a remote summer program, as are most other districts in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Due to the guidelines, in order to come back to school, it would be very difficult to offer a live program, but we're going to offer all of our normal summer programs, all the course recovery programs we need for our high school students, all the remedial programs for some of our elementary and middle school students are going to be in place. In addition, the school committee is working with me to appropriate about $250,000 extra thousand to offer enrichment programs to all students who want to continue to participate in remote learning over the summer. So, we're going to monitor that. So, we're going to leave our laptops out at the homes so that the kids can use them over the summer, anyone who wants to participate. We're going to encourage them to participate. We're going to set up raffles and rewards to encourage participation, hoping to make up for some of the learning loss with this whole move to technology, some of the transitions some of the families have. As far as next year, the guidance we've received from DESI so far has been that the commissioner is encouraging districts to look towards opening with a hybrid model. Looks like the most we could probably put in the buildings, given the current social distancing guidelines, is about 50% of the students. So, we're taking a look at, you know, what could we do with 25, 50%? How could we get them back and forth to school? The transportation, I think some of the social distancing guidelines are more of a challenge with transportation than even in our classrooms. But most of our classrooms are 20 to 25, and they'd have to be 12 with the social distancing guidelines. So, we'd probably be in a Week A, Week B, or Day A, Day B situation and rotating the kids in with half coming into school and the other half working remotely. For our staff, folks who have pre-existing conditions, we'd probably assign those folks to work remotely, and the other staff would be providing the live services to the students who are coming in. We're working now to acquire the PPE that's going to be required to open school, and I've got a reopening team working that's going to work all through the summer so that we're prepared for what comes. But it looks to me at this point that Commissioner is going to be pretty prescriptive relative to a hybrid model for the schools, relative to the requirements that it's going to be to re-enter, but he's not going to let everyone in the state just do their own thing. And I think that's a good thing because it's, that consistency is very important for our workforce. So, we're planning for that reopening. It's a huge... So we're, we're planning for that reopening. It's a huge logistical challenge with all the PPE we're going to have to acquire and, you know, all the, uh, modifications we're going to have to make, uh, to our buildings. But I will tell you that the transportation is an enormous challenge. So we're going to work with a, for hiring a consultant, uh, to take a look at the transportation with us because those requirements where on a regular bus, we can put up to 60 students, sometimes 65, going to an elementary school, we're going to be down to 10 or 12 students. So, the transportation piece is going to be an enormous logistical challenge, but we're working on it and we'll be ready for whatever, uh, the commissioner wants us to execute in the fall for our families.
Thank you, Superintendent. We have a question in the queue, uh, by Counsel Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Superintendent. Um, I appreciate the update. I know we all do. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, first, I want to thank you because I, I had my niece and two nephews, one in kindergarten, one in fourth grade, one in, um, sixth grade, um, over. And I was trying to help them get through their work and assignments and I, and I can tell you that it was hard for me to read the, the work that they had to do. It was different on every level. Um, kindergarten was pretty easy, but the other two, um, was difficult. So I, I, I called every one of their teachers. They were all responsive. Every single one of them, um, responded back to me. And, um, because they don't have the support system at home and so that my, my nephew in the sixth grade didn't get on the computer and do any work for the whole six weeks. So, he was not failing the semesters before, but I don't know how that's going to affect him and how is it determined that he has to go to summer school? Um, it, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, great question. Um, you know, the participation rates, we're really monitoring very closely. But we did work, uh, with a different grading system, understanding the challenges you just mentioned that exist for a lot of our families. So, uh, we went to a credit, no credit for the fourth quarter. We ended the third quarter grades. We closed the grades on March 12th, the day we execute, we, we exited so that, uh, the kids could have earned their full grade by then. So they got graded in a traditional manner, up, up to what they had done by March 12th. For the fourth quarter, um, we're just doing a credit, no credit, and the kids have to turn in certain assignments just to get credit. So it's a, a system that takes into account that, you know, it, it has been a challenge for a lot of students and a lot of families. So, you know, it's a very generous system relative to it. If they tried to participate, they're going to get credit and then they'd pass for the year.
And if they didn't try to participate, they have to go to summer school?
Well, no, if they passed the first three quarters and were doing well, there's, there's no credit. We set it up in a way they'd pass for the year.
Okay.
Tried to be very, very fair to the families. Now, we are offering summer school enrichment opportunities for everyone who wants to engage, but only, the only required summer schools are fe, like based on the other requirements. But if they were passing the first three quarters, they're in good shape.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any tutoring systems out there? I know that Springfield College offers tutors, but are there any through the Springfield Public Schools to help, um, the kids? Because I know some families' parents can't even do some of the math they do or don't teach it the same way. So are there any, um, tutors that can help?
All, all of the schools have been reaching out to families and all of the teachers are engaged. So they should call the principal at their school for any help they need and there's, there's certainly help available. Absolutely. We're helping every family that needs it. And when I looked at our participation rates, I was really proud of our teachers, our councilors and our principals. They worked very hard to reach out to several families. We did a log, so for folks who weren't participating, how many times we contacted them and a few of the ones I checked, they had made six different contacts to the family from different people, be it the counselor, different teachers, principal, to really find a way to help families get engaged in a positive way.
They absolutely have and I, I know, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I know we got to get to other people, but they absolutely have. I can tell you that I'm not the parent, but they were still calling me because I reached out for help and they still keep me in the loop as to what is going on. Um, when I called the mom, she kind of shut me off, so I can't talk to the kids anymore to see what's going on because she thought I was criticizing her, um, which I wasn't. I was just trying to help them. And so, um, I, I did ask the teachers to continue to try to communicate through her, but just to keep me in the loop. So when I do get them, I can help them. But I can tell you that your staff has been amazing. They contact the kids a minimum of twice a week. Try to help them. They get them on Zoom calls. They do a lot to try to catch them up and I just wanted to say thank you, um, for that.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, Counsel Whitfield. Counsel Letterman followed by Counsel Walsh.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Uh, hi Superintendent. Thanks for being with us. I was wondering if you could just, uh, explain a little bit more about, um, what the hybrid process might look like in the, in the new year? And then also what type of professional development, uh, we might be giving to teachers to, to help them cope with the new, uh, requirements? I know that, that certainly, you know, the work that our teachers have done thus far is nothing short of amazing. Um, you know, given the short notice that, uh, they had and how quickly everything came about. Um, certainly they're doing a great job, but just wondering kind of what our plans look like for the fall with regard to that.
Yeah, so the hybrid model for the fall would involve, you know, about 50% of the time in school, the way it looks right now. So I've seen the commissioner present a plan for Week A, Week B, talk to some other superintendents and they're looking at like s- certain days every week. So I've seen one superintendent talk about maybe a plan for Monday and Tuesday in school for Group A, Wednesday for the entire staff to focus on remote learning and then Thursday and Friday for Group B, with a deep cleaning and sanitizing occurring between the two groups. So, those kind of, of plans you, you see coming forward and we'll continue to work with the commissioner's office on developing those over the year. For staff, we're lucky. We have a lot of professional development. We've done a tremendous amount of professional development during this crisis for our staff because folks were freed up from their normal duties, working with the kids in any flexible time. We were working in PLCs and providing PD. We also bring our staff back a week before school opens and provide even more PD for staff. And there'll be PD using the technology. We're also doing some significant diversity training for us. So, we always have an aggressive, uh, PD program. We have seven full days of professional development built into the schedule. Four before school opens with convocation day, so opportunities for more then. And then three during the school year for staff. But during this situation, we've been on providing PD every day to staff.
That's great. And also want to make the decisions about the upcoming, uh, school year. How, how closely are we communicating with and making sure there's input from, uh, the teachers' union, the paraprofessionals' union and, and folks like that?
Yeah, we're meeting with the, all the unions every week to communicate with them relative to what's going on on the local level. So we, we've done that here in Springfield. We usually meet once a month or in this crisis, we decided weekly was needed because communication is the key. But, uh, the commissioner actually has members of MTA and AFT on his reopening team. So as the decisions are getting made statewide, the unions are represented and are... Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Letterman. Counsel Walsh.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Superintendent, good to see you. I also want to congratulate you on the, uh, the wonderful effort you've been making through this crisis. I think, uh, your teachers and supports, you all deserve an A++. I want to tell you, I'm so happy that you were able to give meals. I was so concerned about the children that needed to get the meals and having the access to the meals. I, I think you're doing a super job. Um, I wonder in particular about your remote, uh, teaching. What's happening to two of my favorites? The art and music that we were so excited about offering to everybody. Can you do that remotely?
Yeah, we're asking those teachers to also reach out and come up with ways to engage the students and their families with everything. That's a little different than the basic academics, but we have those folks on the teams. Try and incorporate that because you don't want the kids on a computer with just the learning activities all day. So we're trying to get the other teachers to bring some of those encores and suggestions for families on what they can do with that because that's really important. But we made that effort and, you know, I saw some communities decided through this crisis for next year, they'd be laying off some of the encore teachers. Uh, we are not, uh, going in that direction at all.
Do you anticipate any layoffs?
I, I'm hoping we can avoid layoffs. I'm hoping we can, uh, cope with the budget, but to be honest, we haven't received any firm numbers from the state, so it's still a work in progress. But we're trying not to lay off so any positions we lose will be simply through attrition. So, we're not going to have layoffs, but, uh, will we have the positions we had this year? I don't know yet. We don't have our Chapter 70 appropriation yet, so we'll have to...
You're doing a great job.
I'm very proud of the staff. They've been incredible.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh. Counsel Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, good morning, Superintendent. Glad to see you doing well.
Hi, Victor.
Thank you. Good morning. Uh, two quick questions, just two quick questions. We've got any PPEs which are so critical. Do you have an estimation of how much equipment we are going to need, uh, not only to get us through this crisis, but also to the potential second wave? And, and also on the expenditure side of that, with those PPE, um, are you going to be able to cover that expense okay? Is that going to be incorporated into the budget, uh, for next year or are you, it's going to be deficit spent? So make sure you have the resources you need.
Yeah, so we're, we're working on the PPE appropriations now, uh, the commissioner sent out last week. Uh, some guidance relative to the requirements. The requirements were more significant than we expected. So we're working on putting all those orders together now. I'm hoping, um, we will build it in. We won't deficit spend for it, but we, we were hoping that, um, if there's some FEMA money coming to the city that, um, with that PPE equipment, uh, the mayor can help us in the council with some of that spending, so we won't have to take it out of education dollars.
But I'm, I'm sure that consultant TJ mentioned a couple of ways ago, maybe, okay, except, uh, Superintendent. And so transportation, when you were talking on transportation, in my mind, I got ahead of just thinking about it.
So do I.
It's, uh, is, is a huge, uh, uh, logistical challenge, but the first thing that came to my mind was, uh, the special needs too. You know, can you comment briefly, are they, I will educate against whether they will be impacted the most? Can you comment on this? How are we going to handle that? Or are they going to be learning from all?
So, uh, the special education piece is probably the trickiest piece to navigate, but it's all very, very tricky. You know, special ed vans are minivans, typically 15, 16 kids per van. We can probably only fit four or five. So what we're doing right now is we're reaching out to every family, seeing which families would want to stay remote, be they special ed or a regular ed. Some families are going to want to do that. They're not going to feel safe sending their kids back. And we've been told by the commissioner, we should honor that and we will honor that. So we'll continue to work with them remotely. Uh, some families will want to come in, but may not want to use transportation, be it regular or special education. So, uh, in that case, we, we'd let them come in and that'll help us with the transportation and they don't want them on public transportation. But the students who require special transportation will be providing that. You know, like we always do, we'll just have to work out those routing challenges which are going to be significant and look at what kind of PPE we can use. And we're studying that now to execute that transportation plan. But that's a significant challenge. There is a piece of the special ed law that we've talked to the commissioner about where some families of special ed students, should they want to transport, we could reimburse them for the transportation and not buy it.
Okay.
So, uh, we'll be looking at that too, but right now our school staffs are reaching out to every family and seeing what their will is for next year and we're going to try to organize around that the best we can. And the transportation is probably the most significant challenge we have.
Thank you, Superintendent, and stay well.
Thank you, Counsel Davila. Since there are no other questions in the queue, uh, Counsel Allen or Counsel Fane, I know you haven't had the opportunity to chime in. Counsel Allen, I know you were on your phone for the first half of the meeting. Uh, are you all, all set or did you want to ask a question?
Okay, um, saying that I didn't hear a response, I will conclude with, uh, a question of my own, um, as well as, or actually, I'll conclude with two statements. One, uh, I received a phone call, Superintendent Warwick, around a constituent wanting to actually be able to visualize what it is that the schools will look like in terms of seating. Uh, I think they just wanted, uh, for you to be as transparent as possible. Uh, so I don't know if we can show like a mock, uh, picture of what it will look like in the classrooms. Um, I certainly know that might be difficult considering every school is different, but it might make sense to give us some sort of, uh, mock representation, whether it's on the buses or in the classrooms as to how, uh, it will, how school will be conducted considering, uh, all of the social distancing, uh, requirements that are now in place or will be in place. Uh, so that was the first comment. The second comment is congratulations on the, uh, um, the individual at SciTech who was accepted into, uh, every Ivy League, uh, and, uh, every Ivy League school, um, in the country. I thought that was pretty impressive. Uh, my, my comment slash recommendation also includes a hope that we can figure out, and I know my wife's going to kill me, that we can figure out some way in which we can acknowledge, uh, her success uh, and figure out how to honor her. I know there are some issues around her being the valedictorian, but I've heard a lot of pushback, uh, around, um, that. I certainly understand that there is a policy in place, uh, but there are a lot of people who are disappointed uh, and would like to see, uh, maybe co-valedictorians. I don't know if that is possible, but some sort of solution around that as they feel that, uh, anyone who gets accepted into all of the Ivy League schools ought to be recognized. And, you know, I, I, I get why, uh, I get the policy, um, you know, but if there's a way around it, this seems like the time in which we should make that exception.
I'm very proud of Roberta, what she accomplished is absolutely incredible. Met with her and her mom. We had a great discussion about it. Obviously, when you have guidelines in place with a valedictorian, salutatorian, there's going to be a one winner and a lot of folks who were looking to, to get those awards and distinctions. By our criteria, you know, she did not, um, win it and other student did. And, uh, our criteria is based, was based on a committee that Yolanda Johnson put together some years ago. So we'd have firm guidelines in place to follow so that the decision was really based on a firm, consistent criteria through all of our schools. And a team worked together back in '09 and then again in '14, I believe, to actually put that criteria, look at it, update it. So we have a, a criteria in place. It, we are having a lot of students transfer in and then win the award. And a lot of our staff and families felt that wasn't fair. So this criteria requires four years in, in the Springfield Public Schools. Plus we have a different course criteria than some other schools, so that's why that was put in place. And that criteria, of course, Roberta didn't qualify. We did work to offer her the opportunity to speak as a person with the highest GPA and at the graduation, she declined. And, uh, we understand she's disappointed at this point. But we met with her. We tried to, uh, involve her in the program. We actually offered her to be part of the program and, uh, recognized her for having the highest GPA. But there are several other students who transferred in in other schools as well that didn't, uh, didn't win the award because they weren't in Springfield. The team at the time was unanimous in saying that it's two, been here for four years. We, that should be the ma, a major consideration that was built into the criteria. We're always taking a look at it, to update it. We met with Roberta. I share your, you know, concern and we're very, very proud of Roberta.
I would hate to be in your shoes, uh, Superintendent, as well as my good friend, Principal Alim's shoes.
Kevin's done a great job. Kevin's met with the family. Yolanda talked to the family in December, uh, and again now. And we've all met with them trying to work through this, but obviously we couldn't change the criteria they've awarded from the person who wanted to defend our guidelines. So, we, we, us to work with them. Relative to your first question, I think that, uh, we're already taking a look at that and I have a reopening, uh, task force that has been formed. What I see in a traditional classroom, if this answers it, is typically, you know, our average class size is run from 20 to 25. So what I see is, um, probably 24 desks in a classroom, um, spread out with six-foot distancing, two together and a, one for Group A, one for Group B for when the kids come in, that kind of thing, so that there's really about 12. And, uh, the kids in Group A and Group B would be using different... And the kids in group A and group B would be using different desks, but we'd still sanitize and deep clean between when those groups come in. So that would be what a typical classroom looks like with at least six foot social distancing. I see the cafeteria is closed as we open the buildings. And I see the transportation system the same way. We'll have to do the social distancing on the buses. And that's how I envision it, the smaller classes. You know, again, if we're rotating some special ed students in and out, the same thing where there's usually 12, we probably only have six. So that's how I see us working the classrooms, but leaving the traditional desks in there because as we rotate the students, we'd have them use different desks so they'd stay sanitized. That's how I envision it looking in the fall. We're going to keep working at that. And again, the guidance from the state could change too, you know, as these infection rates change. So we'll be looking at that as well.
Okay, well, thank you Superintendent.
Justin?
Yes, so Counselor Allen, yes.
Yes, sorry, sorry I didn't reply before. I couldn't figure out, I stayed on my phone after my medical appointment, my eye doctor, rather than be disruptive. So I just wanted to acknowledge that I have been listening the whole time and thank my colleagues for their questions and thank Danny and the City Hall people for their great updates. I don't have a further question. I just didn't want to act like I was just hiding here or something. So I'm, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. And we are 11 minutes past the time in which we normally stop. Just a few housekeeping items for the council. We are trying to fit in the budget meetings slash hearings. They certainly will be reduced in nature considering that, you know, we have to do everything remotely and there's only so much time in the day that Focus Springfield can devote towards city council. Counselor Letterman, I see your hand is raised, sir.
Oh, please, please finish, Mr. President. I just.
So we are going to have our Tuesday body camera meeting where we will get a demonstration of the body cameras from 11:30 to 12:30 next week. That has been confirmed. In addition, on Tuesday, this was the only time that we could coordinate between Focus Springfield and the Water and Sewer Commission. I know there were a couple of counselors that wanted to have an additional meeting. That will be set up on Tuesday from 3:30 to 4:30. And then again, we'll have our Thursday update from 11:30 to 12:15. And the likelihood is high that right after that update, we will have one of a couple of meetings with respect to the budget. Originally, I was going to have TJ speak to the budget on Monday at 5:30, but it looks like in our email, we just received an invitation from the mayor to have a conversation around a lot of what is happening with respect to the George Floyd incident and the recent protests. So it doesn't look like that, that timing will work for a budget meeting, although I know TJ is looking to announce the budget in the very near future, if not tomorrow. So stay tuned. I will send it to you in a hopefully comprehensive format in the next day or so once the budget meetings are solidified. And again, it will be a scaled down version. So I know we used to have three meetings with the department heads. That will not be the case. And so we probably will be focusing on anywhere from 10 to 14 departments. And if we can do it all in one shot, then we will try to do so. If there, Counselor Letterman, I'll let you have the last word unless there are other questions.
I was just wondering when we were going to receive the budget. Sounds like you addressed that. And, you know, I certainly will be scrutinizing the budget in the same way that I always do. And I think everybody else will as well. So we appreciate the need to coordinate, but we also have a fiscal responsibility. So I'm hopeful that we can, we can get that done.
Absolutely. Look forward to certainly having future conversations around how we can make that as seamless as possible. Have a great day. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.